Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the City Commission meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thanks for being here tonight, for which I'm sure is going to be a lively agenda. With that, we'll start with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick, here. Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schram.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the work session from the meeting of June 27, 2022, and the regular meeting of June 27, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any commission discussion on the minutes of either meeting. Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the work session, the regular meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Tony, I got to get practicing, waiting for my delay. All opposed, nay, and anybody abstaining? All right, minutes passed. Next, under routine business is schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any commission discussion on paying the bills. Anybody in the public? Al, roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four under routine business is the City Manager's report, so I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and public. Our mission is to provide exemplary services, spaces, and experiences that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. Would like to point out, the Yankton Fire Department did just that. Many of you know, we had a fire in downtown this week. I think it was Thursday morning, and it did impact some apartment buildings where people were living. We did have some animals that did not survive the fire, but the people were able to get out safely, our firemen were able to get in and out safely and put out the fire. So, you know, we don't often think about that. A lot of the things we take care of are not, fortunately, are not involved with living quarters, but while certainly, you know, we wish that hadn't happened, we appreciate the folks that helped there and also the dispatchers that helped guided the fire department. So, I told Chief Linky in humor that this is trial by fire, literally, and drinking from the fire hose, literally. So, we thank our fire department, who are meeting tonight to continue with their training so they can help keep us safe. So, we thank them for it. Also, I wanted to bring forward that I have reached out to Gary Vedder at Yankton County to talk about the next city-county planning meeting. Couple items that we'd like to talk about are some storm shelters, so we're hoping to have Paul Scherschlick from Yankton County Emergency Management join us, as well as Chief Linky, to talk about storm shelters countywide, and then some of the zoning regulations as well in the county. While we don't legislate those, just something that, you know, impacts us in terms of public safety measures. So, if there are other things commissioners that you want to bring forward for our city-county meeting, your liaisons there are Moser and Mybaum, so we're hoping, I'm hoping we can get that scheduled yet this month. Wanted to talk to you and the public about Fox Run. We continue to get some comments about maintenance on Fox, at Fox Run Golf Course, and I'm aware of those. As per my commitment to you all, I was out there last week. On Wednesday, I had lunch again and then took a look a little bit at the course and then did send Jason Soodinga from Great Life an email regarding some specifics, and he did respond that he would check into them and check with staff. So, continuing to stay on top of that as best as I can, understanding that, you know, we probably won't see a lot of big improvement until we see some weather change. Fall is what I'm understanding is where we can really make some, they can make some gains in terms of the winter kill and some of the bigger things that we pointed out as maintenance issues. Public Works has informed me that we're going to have a number of traffic counting devices around Yankton, so if people see those, DOT has informed them and alerted us of that, so those will be going on for a number of weeks throughout the community. Also, want to talk a little bit about on your consent agenda, the work session that we're scheduling, we talked about at your previous meeting, we feel that it would be a good time to talk about Triple B, as well as outside agencies. There's some outside agencies that are funded not out of the Triple B, so we believe that would be a good time to use that, a good way to use that time to help us with the budget process there. Probably not a lot of time, I'm guessing, to hear from folks, but of course, those are public, open meetings that anyone can attend or watch on YouTube Live. Budget meeting, I'm requesting that we schedule that for that first Monday in August, doing one of those, let's start at 5:30, do the best we can, and then have our regular business meeting, make your guys' determination if you would like to continue on then after the meeting. If we don't complete it that day due to some scheduling conflicts, I would suggest then we use our August work session to finish that up. But typically, you guys have been able to finish that up in that one meeting, and I think especially if we get through BBB and outside agencies, we should be able to do that. Under other business, Mayor, if you, if you are, will allow me to, I've had some feedback from commissioners and public on the West Side Park improvement project, I'd like to offer a little more explanation on some of the design elements there, realizing there's no action to be taken, but just want to have a little discussion. I don't want to use all this time when we've got people here waiting for their items on the agenda. But I will stand for questions.
Any questions from the Commission for City Manager Leon? Sorry, I'm appropriately waiting for Tony to make sure I don't interrupt him if he has anything. No?
So, are we, are we waiting to talk about West Side?
Yes, that's what she said, is it's under other business, which is the end of the meeting. Okay. Yep, nope. That will be under other business, which comes after new business. Yep, no problem.
And is it also, sorry, just in relation to them, that item that's been added to other business, if there's anybody from the public who wants to speak to that particular item, would they also wait until other business, or would they be able to utilize public comment period, first of all?
It would have to come under other business, since it's been placed on the agenda. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Now is the time and the place for the public to appear in front of the City Commission on something not on the agenda officially now, tonight. Please state your name and your address.
Charlie Gross, 1510 Burley. I have a request for the Commission, commissioners, if you will. Saturday in the paper, the Committee to Save the Yankton Cemetery ran an ad, and in the ad, we asked the public, because the commissioners want public input, a number of you indicated that, I said, call or email. Well, I've had a number of people say, how do we call commissioners when we can't find their phone numbers if they have cell phones, they're not in the phone book? So, what I would ask of you to do, to make it possible for the public to actually call and talk to you, would be on a city website, list your phone numbers so that those people that do want to talk to you have a way to get ahold of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Thanks for that input, and your request has been notated. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we will, commissioners that are interested can work with City Manager Leon to get that on the public website. Citizens can also call the city office and get information. Our emails are there as well, so lots of opportunity, but I appreciate the comment. All right, anybody else in the public? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Number one is setting the date of July 25, 2022, at 6:00 PM in Room 114, here at the Career Manufacturing Technical Education Academy for the next work session, as City Manager Leon shared, would be on Triple B and outside agencies. Number two is to establish July 25, 2022, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a special malt beverage on off-sale retailer's license for two days, September 17 and October 29, 2022, from Backspace Brewing Company LLC, doing business as Backspace Brewing Company, Chris Allington Partner, that is for Memorial Park at 200 Douglas. Number three is a transient merchant license, consideration of memorandum 22-139, recommending approval of an application from the Yankton Antique Mall for July 23, 2022. Number four is setting the date of August 8, 2022, at 5:30 PM, here at the Career Manufacturing Technical Education Academy for our next budget workshop meeting date. And number five is consideration of memorandum 22-140, recommending approval of a peddler's license from Working with People for four individuals to go house to house selling cleaner, selling cleaner from July 12, 2022 to August 12, 2022. And number six is to establish July 25, 2022, as a date for a public hearing on the request for a transfer of ownership and location of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine for July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, from Anis Properties Incorporated, doing business Patriot Express, which is located at 104 East Fourth Street, Suite A, Kevin Anis President, to Finney's Casino LLC, doing business as Finney's Casino, Deb Palmer President, and that is located at 2101 Broadway. And last, established July 25, 2022, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a transfer of ownership and location of retail on-sale liquor license for January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022, from YC Library LLC, Garrett Horn President, doing business as Capital Street Pub at 401 Capitol Street, to Sri LLC, doing business as Sri Depan Patel Manager, and that is at 821 Broadway, Suite 3. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and anybody abstaining? All right, consent agenda passes. Moving on to old business, number one is consideration of memorandum 22-135 regarding a public hearing to consider resolution 22-29 to vacate the right-of-way on the south 4.3 feet of the west 143 feet of Seventh Street right-of-way, which is located at 618 Douglas Avenue, City of Yankton applicant. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to comment on this? Al, roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number two under old business is consideration of memorandum 22-113 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for three days, which is October 7, October 22, and November 12, 2022, from Ben's Brewing Company, Ben Hanton owner, located at 222 West Third Street, for Mount Marty University tailgating events located at Memorial Park at 2000 Douglas. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Moving under new business, number one is consideration of memorandum 22-134, recommending approval of resolution 22-33, the creation of a tax incremental district, number 11, to be located on the following described property. You can see the length of the property description in there, I will not read all of that to you. As shown on the associated City of Yankton TID number 11 map, all in the City of Yankton, Yankton County. Before I ask for what the pleasure of the Commission is, I will turn it over either to City Manager Leon, to Dave. I know Toby's here, I'm assuming we're going to... Thank you. I would rather we discuss it and work through it, and then we'll see what the pleasure of the Commission is.
Thank you. I will say that earlier this evening, the Planning Commission did review the proposed tax increment district number 11 and recommended to you that it be approved as presented. Real quick history, Yankton, as you know, has been very conservative in its use of tax increment districts as a financing tool, and only done so when it was a project that wouldn't have been able to otherwise occur if it wasn't for having a tax increment district. This is for the area around Gale Drive, East Industrial Area, and we have been kind of waiting for years for a project big enough to come along, a private project and investment big enough to come along to be the catalyst for the installation of some substantial infrastructure that's not only going to serve the area that's shown in that map, but also has the potential to serve areas to the north of Whiting Drive on into the future. So, the Manitou Project, as you may remember, we went through a process of applying for and receiving some grant funds to help with the cost of Gale Drive, and that, those funds were only available because of the Manitou Expansion Project that's being designed right now, and from what I hear, plant submittal is going to occur shortly. But it also is property that sets itself well, sets itself up well for future development on either side of Gale Drive, even further to the east, all the way over to Ali-Max and then on the north side of Whiting. As with all of our other tax increment districts to date, we have development partners involved, and in this case, our development partner is Thrive. And the thing, one of the things for the City Commissioner, City Commission to remember is that we will enter into a memorandum of understanding or a development agreement in the coming months that specify the responsibilities, risks, and liabilities associated with the financing of the project. And as in the past, and will be the case again, if approved, Yankton Thrive will assume the role of developer and hold the city harmless, you know, if there's any shortfall in funding availability down the road. Based on how things look, we anticipate the tax increment district to perform pretty well, and I'm sure Mr. Morris will tell you that when we do the math and create the plan, we're pretty conservative in doing that. And that is the other thing to remember, is that this is just a plan. It, in and of itself, isn't a contract or a guarantee. It's a plan with a number of projections in it that, that we prepare conservatively, so we hope that we meet or exceed the plan with development in the area. And I'd be happy to answer questions, but Toby's the guy with most of the answers.
Dave, would you mind giving, just for the public's understanding, and the Fox Run example of how, why TIDS are important for growth?
Yeah, and that's another good example of, of a project that wouldn't have occurred in the manner it did if it wasn't for having tax increment financing available as a tool. The base value on that, when it was created in the late 80s, early 90s, was $1 million on that property, and at the time, the tax increment district sunsetted, I think it was in 2017, Al, if I remember right, the last number that we had while the district was still alive was, there were $65 million worth of taxable property in that district. So, it went from 1 million to 65 million, and it sunsetted a couple of years early, even, at that. And, you know, here we are five years later, I'm sure that number is 80 million or something even beyond that. So, the question you ask yourself at that point with those numbers in mind is, would there have been development there without the infrastructure that was funded through the use of tax increment financing as a tool? Would there have been private development? Yeah, but the reality is, is that development would have been at a small, much smaller level than what it was. You know, maybe it would have been 10 or 20 million dollars worth of taxable property there, and instead, we're at 65 plus. So, that's a perfect example of it being extremely successful and really helping that area grow.
Dave, when you talk about having to kind of put paperwork together of Yankton Thrive being the developer and partnering with the city, is that a unique partnership? That you're talking about the paperwork, or is that pretty typical?
So, on every one of these so far, and you'll see another one in the coming months where you are the developer, so you'll be essentially entering into a contract with yourself, if that makes sense, but on all of the other ones, where we work with a private developer, they're all performance-based at that point, and they can't pay out any more increment than they create. So, you know, the developer is then motivated to promote development and construction taxable property in the area, because the quicker that that happens, the quicker they get paid back, up to what the total of the TID plan designates. So, that's kind of the way we, Yankton has done it, performance-based, and we've been really successful, and they've all exceeded expectations, but we do have in the contract that if for some reason it doesn't, that the shortfall will be borne by the developer, not the city.
TID number 11, how many of them are still active that haven't sunsetted?
I, we have five active right now. One of them actually didn't get to the point of final adoption, but we just left the number as a placeholder so we wouldn't get confused.
Dave, when you say conservative for our use of TIDS, to be able to relate that to something tangible, my understanding is you can use up to 10% of your total valuation in a TID, of TIDS. What would our total valuation be at the last count, and how much do we think we have in TIDS right now?
Yeah, good question. We're approaching a billion dollars, aren't we, Al? In total valuation, just shy of that slightly, so, and if you look at the numbers in the plan, we're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars of TIDS that are outstanding, where that's substantially short of 10% of a billion, so there's a, that is a good indicator that Yankton has been very conservative in its use of TID as a tool.
Other questions from the City Commission? If not, I would ask for what your pleasure is related to this agenda item.
And make a motion to approve the agenda item?
Second. We have a motion and a second, any other commission discussion now that we have an official motion?
You know, I think the, this project is pretty enticing or encouraging for Yankton as an industrial, commercial expansion potential, but also, as Dave mentioned, the, you know, we're, we're short on housing, and the potential of this sewer line going under the railroad, under Highway 50, to an area where there's 100 or so acres that could be developed 25, 50, 75 years down the road, helps maybe create some vision for how Yankton can continue to grow to meet our demands into the future.
Any other commission comments or discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the Commission on this agenda item? And motion? Seeing no movement, Al, roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries, and I guess I would just like to thank Yankton Thrive for being good partners with the city to put these economic development plans in place that long-term will benefit the city, so thank you for taking that on.
Mayor, it is a little disappointing, we didn't let, we didn't get Toby, we didn't get Toby.
I know, I was trying to think of a question to get Toby up, to get Nancy up, I wasn't firing on all cylinders, but thanks to both of you for being here and showing the importance of what a project like this means to our community and your support. All right, number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-109 regarding a bid award for the 2022-2023 annual supply of transport, tank, wagon, petroleum, and if approved, that bid would go to Gerson Oil. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-137, recommending approval of the mayor's appointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Board. This was in relation to a resignation on that board. Bringing forward in front of you tonight is Chantel, goes as Sam Mason. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any commission discussion?
Who was it who resigned?
Pam Kettering. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-121 regarding a funding request from the Heartland Humane Society. Before I ask what your pleasure is, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Leon to walk us through that, and make sure we're all on the same page of getting an understanding of the request and what all is being asked.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission. You have in your packet information from Carrie Filmeier, who is Executive Director of Heartland Humane Society. She's requesting a financial, some financial participation from the City of Yankton for 2022. As you know, we have an agreement with Heartland Humane Society that we entered into them, into with them for $20,000 annually, and that's for the impoundment of animals within the City of Yankton. So, this is apart from that, just want to make sure that's clear, that this isn't, this is separate from that allocation. That contract is still in place and has been working well between the city and Heartland. Heartland is seeking $40,000 to $45,000 to offset the cost of building expansion and building improvements at their current facility, and Carrie is here, and you have more information in your packet. I won't take away from what she might want to say about the project, but just in general, the remodel and upgrade of that space will create additional space in the facility, allow Heartland to address with Yankton Police Department any instance... allow Heartland to address with Yankton Police Department any instances of animal hoarding. It would include upgraded lighting, heating, cooling, ventilation, and address some potential flooding hazards in the facility that are current, that currently exist, and provide more space for animals, for the City of Yankton, and for community animals in general. What I have here is a request from the BBB, and I did put in your, in your packet information that this isn't, you know, probably a purely BBB request, so my suggestion would be that if the commission does want to fund this after hearing more about the project, that you would make a motion pertaining to the allocation, and then do a transfer from the Triple B into the general fund for perhaps parks and special events, or something that would be more purely Triple B allocated, or more typical Triple B. And we can talk about that a little bit more once I know what direction you're going. But if you have more questions of me, you can, but I'm sure you want to hear a little bit more about the project. There's also a schematic there. There's some current images of what you have today, and then there's also a schematic that you have of what's being planned. So we can talk more about the financing and the details of that after you hear from, from Heartland.
If you could state your name and maybe role, since you're representing Heartland.
Yeah, I'm Carrie Filmeier. I've been Executive Director with Heartland since 2011. I've got Dick with me here tonight, too, to talk about, he's been running the concept of the construction project, the budget. He's got a little bit more of the numbers, if you want to get into details on who we're working with, he's the guy. You're going to want to ask those questions, too. I don't take a lot of time, I won't go through what you guys already have in your packet. I do want to slowly paint a little bit of a history here. So in 2011, when I came on, Heartland was on Burley, very much a makeshift shelter. You guys had the pound down at the river. Our relationship was simple. We drove down there once a week, we snapped some photos, and then we got the P and D to put them in the paper free of charge. There wasn't a lot of good happening with probably either entity compared to today 20 years ago, or even 10 years ago. So in 2017, Heartland and the city decided to come to partnership. Essentially, we created a no-kill community. We were the first in South Dakota. I think that partnership is still strong, it still exists very much. And when that, when that commitment came on, there was no ask of funding by the city to create what is currently the pound facility. Our budget then went in and did some small modifications into what was really a storage closet or building for the previous company. So tonight, we are asking for 45,000. That is now less than 50%. As we move on farther and get every month down, this project continues to increase. And so we are well over 90,000, I think, still maybe under 100. And so we would ask you to consider that 45,000. A few things to note, we've had some instances in the past where officers have gotten bitten outside the pound trying to get a not-great dog into the facility. We're not in a setup right now where we can easily get a dog in without losing it. If that dog is being a little bit of a pickle, there's not a drive-in situation. This construction project does solve that for everybody. It also solves a safety factor inside the facility, a thing called a guillotine door. We don't have any of those. So essentially, it's being able to lock a dog in or out of one side of their kennel, inside or outside, to properly clean, feed, take care of that animal. We lack that. So every time we have an aggressive dog in the facility, we're putting my staff and any officer entering the facility at risk with that animal. We have had some bites in the past as well. So that zero escape and that guillotine is there. We also already talked about lighting and proper ventilation. The walls of the current facility are different products along the interior, so cleaning and sanitary kind of become a little bit of a pickle as well. A few things to note, a few commissioners have asked me a few questions. We're looking at kennels that we've been using in the facility since 2017 on the dog side. They are $20,000. There's no wear and tear. These are kennels that should last 20 to 40 years, given proper cleaning and care for them. We actually have some cat kennels that are from 2008 that will be similar to what we'd be replacing. And once again, I'd be happy to show you, they look brand-new when you walk in, they're stainless steel and good quality. The 20,000 annual agreement with the city goes to just our general budget that help pays for our staff to care for the animals in the pound. We cover vet emergencies. We are doing things probably above what the contract currently states. We're offering euthanasia for injured animals entering the pound without any additional cost to the city. We've never sent a separate additional bill for any sort of animal care that we've gone into during our business hours. Our total budget for the annual year for Heartland is about 310,000, so 20,000 of that comes from you guys right now to operate those pound animals, transition them into the shelter if they're unclaimed. Heartland, unfortunately, as an animal shelter, is not considered a social service, and so there's no funding there from a federal standpoint. Even when we went to build the facility back in 2014 that we're currently in, we missed any state funding, because you can't ask for state funding outside of social services if you've already started the construction project. So we don't fall into any grant lines with the State of South Dakota. There might be some small 500 grants here and there. Yankton Community Foundation comes to mind, but it's really nothing major that we can go after in this case, primarily because of our relationship with you guys. Once this becomes a project that benefits a city, the grant funding nationally from humane organizations just becomes an all and void. The competition's too tough, and they're going to go fund things that don't have a relationship. I think the biggest thing you might bring to, I'll try to do it, there's no contractual relationship with any other entity, city or county, that Heartland currently is in that has the same relationship of ours with your guys'. We do offer assistance with some of the small towns. Tyndall comes to mind, they will work with us during business hours to bring us an animal. But all those small relationships, they have to hold that animal in their city or county for up to three days before we'll actually take that animal. So this is a unique situation. I don't perceive that changing in the next five to 10 years, if not longer. No one's approached us wanting to have a more intimate relationship, and quite frankly, we don't have the space for it. So we are at max numbers right now on our side of it, and I think the city side's starting to creep up again this summer. So this is just solving the solution for the city and Heartland to kind of just create more safe space and a little bit more space. So I will answer any questions, and if you've got money stuff, I'd like you to refer back to Dick.
I do on that, Carrie. And my question is, you know, obviously looking at what you put in the packet for cost, a bit surprised to see half of the cost as being requested from the city, while understanding that that, you know, that Heartland as being a nonprofit also serves a large chunk of our community, not just the city. So wondering what you're doing to offset the rest of the cost or raise money, and what other entities, groups, and individuals are you planning to ask money from to supplement this project?
So right now, there isn't. I think this is the first chapter of that. If you guys come in with a decent donation, this addition is really just an intimate for Yankton and the city relationship. We do sometimes use the pound facility to take in animals that we've gotten, trying to think of a good example, the police station and dispatch has a really great relationship of knowing what qualifies to probably be an officer intake, what maybe is a gray area, it might be an owned dog. A good example, a lot of the times, we get family members who get dogs or cats dumped on them. If we're at capacity, we want to try to solve that situation, because they're just going to continue to call YPD or us and harass anyway. So we'll go in and take that dog or cat, put it back into this facility that currently is the pound for those two, three days until a spot on our side opens up. We are at that. So we, the addition of funding is really for this relationship. The 10 kennels will be deemed solely for Yankton County use, for mostly the Yankton pound, but occasionally for us, and I didn't want to not be honest about that. We've got a dog in the back area right now that came from a city surrender last week that'll come out tomorrow. So we do occasionally use Yankton pound when there's flexibility to do that and the rest of us are at capacity. Our facility has 24 kennels for dogs inside Heartland, not including this project, and for cats, it's like 42. So we don't plan on using this addition for anything but city relationships. Did that answer your question?
Kind of. Not really. I guess I was asking where else you're going to get funding from this, or are you relying slowly on the city?
So Heartland already has funding set aside on our end from some previous donations that have come in in the last 12 months. So we plan on using that funding already given to us for general budget purposes to cover whatever we need to do with that project. So they were generally, they were private donors already.
And I don't know, obviously, what my fellow commissioners are going to do. Sorry, I keep taking the mic up, right? Don't worry, they interrupt when they need to.
It's okay.
If the city would come in with less, because obviously times are tight for everybody in what we're trying to do, is that an option? Does this project happen, or what happens? And that's why I guess I was asking about additional funding, because...
Yeah. I'm going to look at Dick when I say, I don't think there's anything to cut on this project besides space. So what you guys decide will decide the length of this facility. If the city, for example, turns us down, then maybe we just fix what currently is the pound for probably a cost of $10,000 to $15,000 and kind of limp through and maybe hopefully revisit this down the road. Dick has been pretty diligent. This is really a bare-bones facility. It is strictly kennels and lighting and a couple doors and windows, so we're not putting anything fancy in the room. We were also surprised at the cost of construction for this project, but I think that's just the world we're living in.
Yeah, probably none of us would be surprised at the cost of your construction materials for this. I would turn to Chief Foot. In the commission packet, it said, according to YPD, we are not aware of a need for additional space for city animals, but yet Carrie addressed a few tonight. So if we could get your thoughts on that statement that's in the commission packet.
So as, year-to-date for this year 2022, we have not been at max capacity in that facility, except for today. And they were working at relieving that by contacting the owner of a dog, so we wouldn't be full actually today either. So it'd be full for a short time for 2022. In, from 2021, 4/19/2021 to 4/19/2022, we had approximately 10 days at full capacity. Some of those numbers are skewed in favor of Heartland Humane Society, because our clerical mistakes of not getting taken, not getting the animals taken out of the pound log causes them to be full when they're actually not full. So we spent 32 days at three-quarter full, according to our pound log. So we've taken in probably 125 to 130 animals per year for the last three years. So I think the need for us to actually have more space is not really there. We're borderline for a few days a year maybe, but not for an entire year for that space.
Chief Foot, one of the comments that Carrie made was the safety issue when handling aggressive dogs. For the police, from your perspective, you know, the new setup that they're describing with that, it sounds like a much better fit for the, from a safety standpoint.
Yeah, without actually looking, I didn't look at the plan, so I couldn't tell you exactly what it looks like from a safety standpoint. Anytime you're dealing with a dangerous animal, there's going to be a little bit of a risk there. Containment is probably the biggest issue that we would want to have, and a lot of times, handling those dogs in and out of a kennel is usually your most risk when we're doing that. So if the facility has a place where you can drive in and it's secure, and you can get the dog out, and you don't have to worry about the dog getting loose and obviously injuring somebody else, that would be a benefit. I do know that the kennel that they have set up right now for a bite dog is adequate. It's probably not ideal, but it is adequate.
Other questions? We got Chief Foot at the mic, and now Carrie, Dick, anybody can bounce back up if we need to. Otherwise...
I have commentary.
Oh, hang on.
Can I have Carrie stand up just to...
Hang on, Commissioner Minor.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Just to give an explanation of the, of the safety that you were alluding to that...
Yep. So currently, if you're anything familiar, so our police end up driving to the back of the facility. It's a wide-open area. Highway 50 is around the corner, we've got a road right there as well. Some other businesses and residential straight to the east and north of that. They have to get the animal out of the police vehicle on leash usually. I mean, on a house, you would do it, you'd have to carry the animal or put it on leash. And then they enter the facility and then enter, the first kennel we have reserved for aggressive dogs, we have, we have a kennel top on it, so once the dog is in there, outside of feeding it and watering it every day, because we have to open the swinging kennel door to get food or water in, the dog is in this facility and safe. So the issue really is from that car movement into the kennel. This change demolishes the current building, and we have a door that goes into our current garage, so we're not asking to build a garage. In the ability that the police station or an officer would want to drive in, they could simply park the car outside, walk into the facility, open the garage door, be able to pull in, close the garage door, and then there'll be a door that goes directly into the outside runs from right where the back of that vehicle will be, to which they could have a kennel open and ready for a dog to go in. The other side of the facility will have the general just walk in, normal kind of business hours for the police station. They won't have to go through that method if they don't want to. So essentially, we're building two entrances with two different options. One's going to take a little bit more time for the officer, but if they feel the need to do that, they have the facility to use it, as well as our staff assisting with them as well. So safety is a big concern for me in the current pound, not only for the animals who are sitting in water at 2:00 AM when it is raining out, they are sitting in water, but also for my staff to be able to feed and care for them daily. We're seeing more bite holds at the city level. I don't have the data on that. I'm not saying that's why we need to build this, but it is becoming more often that we have a bite hold animal in the pound.
And where in the schematics that were sent to us is that garage door, or whatever you're putting in? I don't see anything in the schematic with a garage door for a drive-in.
So if you look at that, on the far west side of that, of the addition is where you're going to see the dog kennel runs. On the south, so the southwest corner of that, you'll see that there's like a door entering the property of Heartland that is the current garage, so that'll go right into the garage facility. And the door is already there, we just plan to replace the door with the project. So that's the door that currently goes into the pound runs at the moment. So we'll be opening that up and creating some outdoor space from that door. I don't know if that makes sense.
Twain, is it possible to pull up the schematics that were in the packet?
Thank you. So that's, that is actually your pound, that is not our garage, that is the exterior wall of the pound right now, which is causing some of the flooding woes that we're experiencing. That picture will do great. So you'll see north is actually pointed towards your right corner. That exterior wall you're looking at, the far right door is currently where the pound is, so our garage door, that's our garage to pound access. We have to go through our garage to get to the pound. And so that door stays, but it becomes outside space. So if an officer needed to pull into our garage, close the garage door, the back of their vehicle would line up with that door, they could take a dog from the backseat straight out there. If the kennel run's already open, they can throw them in there. I know that doesn't seem like a big step, but dogs are pretty smart. So that first run right there you see would be a guillotine cover, and then on the far end, the other one. So if an officer is using the other exit or entrance to the facility and the dog starts to get a little shady on them, their first safety run is the first one they see on both sides of the facility when they enter. And that was designed on purpose. So as soon as you're getting nervous with the situation, you should be able to find a kennel close to you.
Where's the garage door? That's where they drive in. Drive in.
So that's large, is the north side of the building?
So that's the pound exterior wall right now, but it's also a garage. So the old pound becomes a Sallyport garage.
No, the old pound is completely demoed, where that door is, that door currently enters the current pound.
Oh.
So we're shifting the whole facility slightly to the east to create that outdoor space for a safety drop-off.
If you go back up and look at the picture of the kind of garage.
Dick, I am going to ask you to... Step up to a microphone, because these meetings are recorded. Thank you. If you could state your name.
Dick Thompson. Yeah, so if you see that picture, the top left, this is the pound today, that's the door that goes into the pound area. And if, if that picture to the right of it wasn't there, and that picture was expanded to the south, you would see another garage door, and that's the one that goes into the building that would stay, and that would be the garage. access for the police officers.
And it's a 10-foot door, right?
Yeah, that's a 10-foot wide door. And if you look at that picture on the right of the top, you can see, I think it's an orange water cooler setting there. There's a garage door right there that comes out into the pound. That's the one that we're talking about that would stay, and that would be the access from the garage into that run to get them into the kennels.
Is that like a coded entry?
Currently, there is a code. So if you're looking at that garage door, just to the right of there is a walk-in door. That is coded with a code for, yes, for the Yenton Police Department.
I said, give me a second, and then we just kept going.
No, I just have a statement. I would encourage the commission to consider funding this at the $45,000. When the commission entered into this partnership, our investment up until this point has been in services, right? We have never invested in the space. And when this partnership fell together, Heartland did a good job of creating a makeshift space. That functions. That's adequate. But our mission statement isn't about adequate. It's about exemplary. And I understand they're animals, not citizens. But of course, there are people attached to the animals, and there are staff and there are police officers. This is a one-time investment, and this isn't impacting... There's a huge building beyond this city area, pound area, that you're managing completely on your own. This is a one-time investment. The commission has historically invested in brick and mortar when we've had a chance to positively impact other partners. So I'd like to see us make this investment and really, really improve the situation for everybody involved.
Mayor Moser, if I may, I feel like the city commission has done an exemplary job the last few years of cleaning up some animal ordinances, creating some rules that are going to prevent animal cruelty and neglect at a large business level in this community. But you don't have a facility to confiscate any animals. So that is essentially why we want more space. So if the situation arises where you want to take animals out of a business or residential home, there is a proper place to place them. At this point, if you relied on Heartland to do that, we would get as creative as possible, but it may not be safe.
You know, and I'd like to echo that from a safety and health standpoint. I lived in a different community that did not have adequate space, a much larger community but didn't have adequate space, and it created a health issue for the community, a safety issue for all those involved, and it created a lot of predators coming into the community because houses would dump lots of animals outside. Now, we don't see that here. Clearly, we're doing what's working, but as we grow, we need to expand to adjust accordingly.
And I don't know if it was clear, the current facility floods when it rains. So there's going to have to be some investment in some way, shape, or form to straighten that out.
Go.
And just to add to that, if the city doesn't provide funding, we're going to have to do something, either with the help of the city or without. It's at that point that from not only a safety perspective, but just a construction, a structural perspective, it's in pretty tough shape.
Any other commission discussion, questions?
This is Commissioner Myvom. So also in the packet here, it talks about last year, there was an attempt at addressing the flooding that was occurring at the facility. A construction company had provided a quota of $7,500, but the company never completed the project. Just curious to know if the project had actually started or not, and maybe if there is some more information as to what went into the decision to go with that particular company and if they ever provided a reason for not finishing it.
I'll give you a short background on that. So the flooding from the garage that you guys are looking at in the picture has been an issue for a long time, probably, I think, since 2017. We've had bored afternoons where they've donated their time and energy, and we've tried everything. We've built up around that garage door and the inside and outside. It's never solved the problems. Last summer, when it finally started raining again, we noticed that the flashing at this point was now leaking. So now we have water coming down the interior walls. And so at that point, we did get Jim Berklin to come out. He built our shelter in 2014 through 17. And so we had him look. He got up there. He said, yep, the flashing's crap, and you really got to replace this garage door. And so that was the bare bones budget to do that. My board approved it without asking the city for help. We wanted to just stop the flooding that was happening in there. It's starting to, there's starting to be, you know, some deterioration at the ceiling point. We gave him the go-ahead last October to come complete that project, and he just never showed up. So here we are.
Was any money paid for services?
No.
What else was your transition process or how does this look? Because obviously, you said you're going to kind of demolish part of it, rebuild it. What happens to the animals in the middle of this construction?
Dick, do you want to just talk about, he went through the bidding process, and I think he kind of has given a timeline to two companies, and he'll give you an update on that.
Yes, we sent this out to, I think it was seven different contractors. We got bids back from three. Two of them were very, very close in amounts. And we've talked to all of those contractors, though, when we sent the bids out, that time is going to be of the essence, that once you start, it's not, okay, we're going to work a few days now and come back in a month. It's you've got to get it done. And we've talked about a maximum of a two-week timeframe. So during that two-week period, we'll make accommodations within the facility and try to do things the best that we can to make sure the animals are taken care of, officers are safe, everything is handled properly.
Well, essentially, and I hope Chief Foot would acknowledge, my cell phone's at dispatch. So we plan on just setting up some makeshift access. The police can, we can give them full access to the shelter, so we would do that for those two weeks. They'd have to take a few more steps to put an animal in, but they could securely put an animal in our facility during those two weeks. So we would just probably actually have to shut down intake for Heartland dogs to make space for the city dogs during that timeframe.
I think safety is extremely important, and I know it's been brought up about bites and bringing in dogs that are a bite risk. How many times do we know how many times in the last number of years that someone's been bitten by a dog that's been brought in, whether it be police or your staff?
I can tell you, I have a staff member that is, she's our weekend warrior, so she does our AMs Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays. She's been bit by three cats and three dogs in two years. Chief Foot, I don't, it's handful, two, three, we just had one recently, I know, but I think maybe three, four, five officers. I mean, it's nothing major, but I don't want anyone getting bit. That's my concern. I want to just prevent that if possible.
I have those stats with me at all. I can remember a few times where officers have gotten bitten. I don't know that there was actually at the facility. I think maybe it was prior to actually taking them to the pound.
Al, as a funding mechanism, I know, acknowledge Amy's comment about this not being a typical BBB funding request, but what if we were to transfer money from the BBB into the general fund or to the Parks Department, for example, as Amy alluded to? What's our balance on the BBB right now?
I believe we're slightly over $500,000, give or take. And again, for this year, you're deficit spending slightly in the BBB, meaning you're spending a little more than your revenues. And Dwayne, do you know our projected, right at the end of this year, I think was down to, I want to say 460-ish?
Do you have a microphone, Dwayne?
Yes. Sorry. This would be 2021's adopted and proposed. So these numbers are a little bit old, but we ended 2020 with a balance of about $610,000, and we're projecting 2022 at 461. But our revenues, as you know, came in quite a bit better than that. So we probably are in that projecting mid-500-ish number, I think, for 2023. I'm not 100% certain on that. I don't have the latest spreadsheet open. I have a version that I furnished to the city manager earlier in the budget process, and I can look for that while you guys are having your continued discussion.
Dwayne, do you know what percent of growth is that based on?
This, as I mentioned, was an older growth measure, so the newer projections were based on 5% for this year and 3% for next year. And I'll look for those numbers while you guys are continuing your discussion.
Mayor Moser, if I may too. I see up there, if you, if it's the wish of the commission to fund this but be hesitant about the money upfront, Heartland would be in a situation financially where, without any additional interest, we could look at a payment this year and next year and still be able to complete the project this year.
Carrie, this is Commissioner Myvom. So yeah, typically, what we would, for an item like this, brick and mortar, this is something we would typically budget for, you know, essentially for 2023. Granted, there, it sounds like there may be an argument to be made that there's some urgency in this situation, and so that, you know, makes sense for us to consider an incidental investment. I guess where my head is at, it's maybe not so much planning to budget for this for next year, but more than anything, just to kind of see how construction would shake out for you guys. And I appreciate your honesty too, because it would sound like you may even approach six figures as the project continues on. So I would be curious to know, you know, what the post-mortem, I suppose, would be. And again, that's kind of where my head is at, make sure that construction happens and that you guys end up getting the facility that you feel is necessary, and then for the city to be able to offer up a contribution to help make the project whole.
So just to give you a little bit better idea, the worksheet that I have up is 7/23 at the end of 2022 estimated, and that doesn't have some of the commitments the commission has recently made for like Riverboat Days. There was another small commitment for another project. So that number's going to be fairly close, and that would be based on 5% growth over 2021 and 2022. So that would be 7/23, 8/23. And that number is still a working number. I'll caution you on that part of it.
I want to make sure we do our due diligence in discussing. Not seeing any mics come on, so there's lots in front of the commission right now to consider. For anybody who may want to make a motion, I would ask, one, it include the amount if you choose to do that. It include the funding and how you want to approach that. And obviously, Carrie just offered up if it pleases the commission to split that into two years, however you want to do that. So I don't know if there's somebody jumping forward, but I would ask, what is your pleasure?
Okay. I would make a motion to allocate $45,000 as requested via the general fund and transfer the same from the BBB to another source like Parks and Rec.
Second? Just to clarify, Commissioner Schramm, that is all upfront in one year?
Correct. I think we're in a better position this year, knowing how tourism is doing and the future's hard to predict.
We do have a motion and a second on the table with the clarification for $45,000 donation coming out of the general fund or coming out of BBB, transferred to the general fund. Did I have that backwards?
I apologize. I had a little sidebar discussion.
The way I'd stated it, and please correct me on how the semantics would work, but I said to allocate $45,000 out of the general fund and transfer the same from BBB to Parks and Rec to balance that budget.
And the second was, excuse me, Minor. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Any commission discussion now that we have an active motion on the table?
I think it's a great opportunity to take us from this makeshift space into a space that is designed to function the way the city and Heartland needs it to function and will last for years and years to come.
This is Commissioner Myvom. I would make an amended motion, and it would simply be this. Same funding mechanism that Commissioner Schramm had mentioned. However, I would do half of the funding request at this point in time, and I would offer a second half of their request upon completion of the project. So at a subsequent city commission meeting where Carrie and Dick could come and provide us with a post-mortem of the completed project. And at that point in time, they could request the second half of the requested dollar amount. And I would ask for a second.
I'll second that.
All right. We have an amended motion to provide half upfront this year with, they love having you at the commission meeting, Carrie and Dick coming back, the completion of the project with an update in numbers. Ross, sorry for my delay. Ross and I were just talking. We don't always get an amendment. Ross, was there anything to keep in mind with that that you were sharing?
I said logistical questions as it relates to the contract. Is there retainage? Does that work with your budget? I mean, logistically, how would that function?
In terms of our contract with the city right now?
The actual construction with the contractor.
I'll let Dick talk about that.
So the contract would be split into a couple of pieces. There's the contractor will do the construction on the building part, and then the fencing and gates and all that kind of stuff is going to be done by a different contractor. But we would end up paying, I mean, if you approve half the funding now, half at the completion, or if you do it all now, we would fund the whole project through to completion using those funds as they're available. Does that answer what you're asking for?
It did. It's confirming that that would be feasible for your project.
Yeah, we have the funding available that we can move things around in our budget and make that work.
So Mayor Moser, it would require a vote on the amendment? And if that is successful, then you would vote the motion as amended?
Thank you for clarifying, Ross. We do have an amended motion to pay a half upfront this year out of the budget and half next year. A motion and a second.
Excuse me, just one second again. Could I get clarification? The project is going to be done this year, right? And I believe the motion is to pay half now, and then upon completion, they come to a commission meeting. So it could both be this year, is my understanding.
And that's my understanding as well, Al. That is how I had proposed the amendment, and that's based on what Dick had presented here tonight. My understanding is that there's an urgency to get this project done, and so, yes, thank you for clarifying again. That is my amended amendment, in fact. And it could easily all happen this year. And in fact, before any contractor may even ask Heartland to pay perhaps the second half of their invoice, or if they have net 30 terms with that particular contractor, they could already have a second payment approved by the city. they could already have a second payment approved by the city commission. That's, that's possibly how that could even play out. Who knows? But again, that's, that is my amendment as I had proposed it.
My apologies on that, because then I had, so half upfront and half upon completion whenever the project is completion. So ensuring that it is completed is kind of what you're looking at there, Tony, of putting it that way?
Nailed it.
Okay. And Ben, that is your understanding of your second, just clarifying. Okay, I want to make sure we're all legit there. So we do have a confirmed motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the amendment?
Question for Heartland. Would you be willing to come back and talk to us and let us know that it's completed if we gave you the money upfront?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We are going to vote now on the amendment. And if approved, then the motion. If not approved, then the motion. So we vote on the amendment first. The amendment again is to pay half upfront and half after the completion of the project. Al, roll call?
Weber?
No.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
No.
Schramm?
No.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Amendment carries. Now we will vote on the motion of doing $45,000 donation payment for the project and the transfer monies accordingly in the budget. Any discussion on that? Anybody in the public?
I do want to clarify, and this will be probably a Ross question. So we're going to transfer money from the Triple B to the Parks Department specifically to make the Triple B work? Is that correct?
I'm actually going to defer to Al on that one. But that is what I understood.
That's my understanding of what your intention is, is that you're, you're basically, you're saying, well, we'll fund something else in Parks and Rec, freeing up what is already budgeted in Parks and Rec to transfer because the Parks and Rec is supplemented by the general fund. So technically, you're just trying to free up money. So you're not taking it directly out of BBB. You're taking it out of Parks and Rec slash general fund because you've freed up money from BBB.
Any other commission discussion?
And I apologize for people at large listening and even the people in this room. It sounds like a shell game. It's just, it's because of how funding is set up legally on what you can and can't spend certain funds on. So it's, honestly, we do this on a number of different projects because of the limitations of law on, on how you can spend it.
Other commission discussion? Anybody in the public want?
Yeah, for everyone in the audience who's still kind of shaking their head, my offer of clarification is, yeah, it's a show game.
Or being good stewards of spending our money correctly. All right. Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? Roll call.
Villanueva, and now you're voting as amended. Villanueva?
To clarify, we're voting, read the, please read the motion and amendment.
Okay, the amendment was to give them half now upfront and then have them come to us when the project is completed to say, we're successful, we're done, we've paid our, we will be paying our bills. Can we have the second half? And again, it can all happen this year. It depends on their schedule and construction.
Can I ask, what happened to our original motion?
It was amended and you voted on the amendment. Now you're voting as amended. So you, you, technically, you didn't vote on the original one because of an amendment.
Because it got amended. Got it.
Correct. And, and again, we're back to Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Lots of discussion, hard questions, and it's not because we don't think you're not doing a great job out taking care of all of our four, two, and maybe no-legged friends. We're not going to talk about the no-legged ones, but appreciate all that you're doing and, and hope that this helps continue the shelter into the future. And obviously of main importance, not only to us, our four-legged, two-legged, and no-legged, but is obviously keeping our city staff safe too. So I appreciate you considering that as you were putting that together. All right, moving on to number five under new businesses, consideration of memorandum 22-136 and resolution 22-34 regarding the agreement between the Fraternal Order of Police Union and the City of Yankton. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this agenda item? Ross, it's my understanding basically that this just kind of covers the terms of employment, wages, disciplinary actions, and things like that as agreed upon?
Yes. It largely mirrors the existing collective bargaining agreement that is in place for the regular employee union for the city. There's a few specific terms that are unique to police officers, things regarding their gear and extra duty pay as individual officers train each other to do specialized tasks. But on the whole, it generally is in keeping with the existing policies and in very few places does it amend the personnel manual. So we will, to the extent that it does, we will be later updating the personnel manual accordingly.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-117 regarding a Brownsfield program applications. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Dave, I know when we did the media briefing, just to kind of put it in front of the, the community, millions listening at large, basically this is authorizing the city manager to sign letters of support for this project. So maybe just a little bit about what is the Brownsfield program and what does this mean?
Sure. Brownfields program is kind of the EPA's friendly way of doing analysis and also remediation. This part of the program is administered by the Department of Agricultural and Natural Resources and it is only for assessments. And it's available to private property owners. So the two scenarios that could happen are anytime a private property owner who isn't responsible for what's maybe on their property, in other words, a previous owner, you know, there, there's something on their property that, that they want to investigate. Anytime there's one of those private property owners that wants to move forward with an application, they could either come to the city individually and request a letter of support, which would mean multiple actions in the future by this commission for, you know, who knows, two to 20 different addresses. Or what we're recommending here is that you give the city manager blanket approval to support something that's a good idea. And that is if we have private partners that want an assessment of their property, we certainly would hope that we can help them investigate what may or may not need to be done. And this is just for assessment dollars. It's, again, not for actual remediation.
Commission discussion?
Typically, what does that assessment cost? I mean, how, how is that?
So that's a great question, because we just actually, as an applicant, applied for one and had it completed at the wastewater treatment plant number one. And if I remember right, it was 25, $27,000?
Water treatment plant number one.
Oh, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Waste water.
Oh, I'm sorry. Water treatment plant number one. Yeah. $20,000 to $50,000 is pretty typical for larger structures.
Other questions from the commission? Roll call.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number seven under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-138 and resolution 22-35 regarding the Meridian Bridge underwater inspection. I don't know, Amy, Adam, I don't know if you kind of want to address kind of what's going on here and, and what's being considered tonight.
Yeah, just very quickly, unless there's more questions, we do our underwater inspection in partnership with the DOT. I think it's every five years. And so the last time they did their inspection, they said we were in good shape for at least another five years. But, you know, the underwater inspection is, is important because we can't see what might be, could be deteriorating underneath. And so we partner with DOT and, and they take a look at our underwater inspection. And I'm just needing to come up with the cost here. $26,000, it looks like. So they have professionals that comes in and they give us a report and then give us some, you know, suggestions if there are any or things we need to look out for.
Are the water levels still low? I mean, so even, I get it's an underwater, but do we feel like it, they'll even be able to assess more or would it matter? I'm just curious. Doesn't matter? Okay. Any other commission discussion?
When would this take place?
Usually September timeframe, Commissioner Mybomb. They give us a little bit of a heads up, but I think they have kind of a circuit that they run. So some of it's weather dependent.
Anybody in the public? Oh, I probably better take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I did ask for commission discussions. Is there anybody in the public? Seeing no movement, Al, roll call.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-141 regarding a quest by, by Riverboat Days for fireworks public display on August 19th, 2022. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Abstain affiliation.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunig?
Aye.
Mybomb?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Let there be fireworks at Riverboat Days. Always a good tradition and a fun one for our community. That is the end of new business, but as we discussed at the beginning of the city commission meeting, we did add an agenda item to other business, which is the Westside Park Improvement Project. I would remind my fellow commissioners tonight that since this is under other business and has not been a published item, there will be no commission voting. This is just for discussion. And that is what's in front of us tonight. This is not an official agenda item, so no action can be taken. And I will turn it over to city manager Leon to begin this discussion.
Thanks, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. A few things. Some input from the public and some input from you on Westside Park. So I wanted to offer a little more explanation and discussion about things I've been hearing. First has to do with geese, ducks, turtles, and fish. I think you, many of you know, we've had a relocation of, of geese and ducks that are wild. Those don't belong to the city. They're wild animals. Some have been benefiting very well from, from the city and they can no longer on their own get away from the area. So they were relocated. So I want people to be aware of that. Also, turtles were relocated. They, I believe, went into the Missouri River. So those will probably not come back, but I imagine as we move forward with the improvements, we'll have turtles that come back. We did our best with those. Fish, of course, were a little more complicated. So if you were around as the pond was draining, you saw that there was fish that didn't make it from the pond. Our Parks Department has done their best to get out there and pick up the fish to avoid, you know, just the scene of not of dead fish there, for lack of making that sound any bit nicer than it is. And as more water drains, there are some, you know, that, that didn't get picked up. We're doing our best to get those picked up. But yes, the fish didn't make it. The intention is that we'll work with game fishing parks when there's water back in the pond and restock that for, for fishing and probably will be a little better fishing because the intention is that it will be a 15 feet, feet deep then. So wanted to let people know that. I will respond to the emails I got, I have about the animals that I've gotten the last couple of days. Haven't done that yet, but I will. So I will respond to citizens that are talking about those. Also, lots of feedback on the area of the plan. That's the kayak launch area. That's not intended for experts like Amy Minor to take their kayaks out and race.
Just try and stop.
She can do that. And, you know, kayak launch area, I don't know if that's the best term or not. As we talked about it more as a staff, it's really an area to access water. So we envision that, as we talked about design of that project, as an area where if you maybe had young children or somebody just starting out who wasn't ready to go to Lake Yankton or wasn't ready to slip their kayak into the river, that might be a place to test the water, so to speak. But more importantly, a way to access the water. So fishing or even curious kids who like to, you know, skip stones or what have you into the water, we wanted to make sure there was a way to access the water without being on the rocks. So that was important in the design. You know, also folks that have maybe some problems with ambulation or, or mobility, just to give, some people like to, you know, feed the ducks. And if you're, for example, and using something to assist you to, to mobilize wheelchair or what have you, that'd be pretty hard to do on the rocks. So, so lots of feedback on that. It isn't, you know, we understand that we're not going to have 500 or 300 kayaks in there. We get that. So those two topics of importance. Also, lots of feedback and lots of discussion the last few days about the cottonwood tree, the large cottonwood tree on the island. So I want to visit about that a little bit. So just a bit of history first. Initially, some of you might remember this, there were two large trees on that island. One of those trees blew down in a storm or blew down because of age, I don't know, because it was before my time. As a follow-up, the Parks Department chose to plant an additional tree, knowing that the existing large cottonwood had a lifespan and a timetable to it, but that we enjoy the island as a community and, and that we like the tree on the island. So that was planted, oh, at least 10, 12 years ago now, I'm thinking. It was there when I came on scene and it's still there and it's starting to establish itself. So that was always the understanding we, as a staff, were operating under is that that smaller tree there was the long-term tree. Also, in the design plan, there's an additional oak tree planned for the opposite side of the island. So there will then be back to that two-tree scenario on the island. So there will then be back to that two-tree scenario on the island. When we design projects, we do a couple of things. We kind of have an internal checklist we go through about what makes good sense. So we talk about, and this is, you know, street projects, park projects, beautification projects, any kind of project, sustainability. So we usually have, we call, I kind of call our projects of the city generational projects at best. So we have one shot to do a project typically. We're probably going to do one aquatic center in my lifetime, unless somebody tells me something else. I hope we do one library in my lifetime. I hope we, you know, all those things. So we try to do things that make sense long, long term. Also aesthetics, we look at that, you know, aesthetically, do the plans, do the designs, the things we're going to do make sense? Does it look nice? But primarily, you know, we look at also safety and the things we do have to check those boxes. You know, if they do, they stay. If they don't, we don't follow through with them. So those are kind of the questions we ask. So when we're looking at, you know, for example, the Walnut Street project, that was some years ago. Some of you were on the commission, some were not. Same criteria. You know, we wanted to, we knew we were going to have one chance. We knew we needed to address even literally in that area, some trees in that area. And in that case, those trees were healthy and those trees, you know, were not necessarily causing any kind of aesthetic or danger to anybody. But we knew that most of them were ash and we have the ash borer coming, so those were removed with that project. And there were, there was some discussion about that as well, not a lot. But I do remember a couple of people being upset about removal of those trees. So that's really how we arrived at the decision, how I arrived at the decision when we were talking with stockwell engineers about that project, about that cottonwood tree. That no, it would not be part of the project, didn't meet those three criteria. So I'm happy to answer questions about that, but I want to give you guys one more thing to think about, talk about, and consider. You know, when this project is done, the intention is to have a fifteen-foot-deep pond there around. It's going to be dredged out and that'll help us with a lot of things, our fountain, wildlife, lots of good things. And the time to, the best time to replace that tree, which, you know, in my perspective, does need to be removed, is when we're doing this project and when the pond is drained and empty. We, as a staff, always try to do our best to give you the information that you think you'll be interested in or to give you an opportunity to talk about things you'll be interested in. Sometimes we hit that mark. Sometimes we don't. It sounds to me, from the feedback I've gotten to you, that, gotten from some of you, that we didn't hit the mark and that I didn't hit the mark in this instance. So I offer a word of apology for that. And I will say that, you know, I made similar decisions with the similar projects and felt comfortable making this decision as well. But I do want to be, you know, hold account for making that decision and also answer questions that you have because I know if I'm getting feedback from the public and having people call me and saying, "Did you see what was on Yankton Buzz about this and that?" Or send me texts from Yankton Buzz, you're getting that too. So I want to have that opportunity to have that conversation. Commissioner Johnson is not in town, but I'll also have the conversation with him as well. I don't want to, I don't want to get ahold of him now, but I'll follow up with him as well. So Mayor, I stand for questions or comments or feedback on that process.
Thanks for going through all of that because, like you said, we've heard about all of it. And my example was, and I was wrong. I said, I'm sure we, I don't know if we'll see Commissioner Minor kayaking around the island, but now it sounds like, heck, yeah. It's a kayak launch. I like it. Is that like, Amy, when you're, I guess my question is on that, not to back off, the last part that you shared. Is that similar to like a zero-depth entry that we might consider at a pool, that it's just more of a gradual intake to make it easier or is there still?
I'd want to look at the plans, but I don't, you know, it's not intended to be a swimming hole.
Right. Yes. Let's make that, I just didn't know, like a gradual, more of a, not a drop-off like we'd have on a.
It'll have a slope for folks that couldn't hear Adam, but again, I'm not trying to encourage that as, hey, jump in and swim. We have a more than adequate swimming facility. I'm thinking of, you know, folks feeding ducks or, you know, people are curious about water and want to be near it, even, you know, somebody sitting, you know, in a lawn chair or something like that or being able to fish there if they're not able to utilize the other space.
So I did have a question about that. Now, it seems sometimes when we have things, people sometimes push the limits of what could potentially be there. So we're saying that it's a kayak launch, but if I brought my canoe there, that would be okay? As well as if I fell in the water and it's warm and I stayed in there for a little bit longer than I should, am I in trouble since I'm swimming or how does that work?
Yes, you are. Well, you know.
You can't fall in the water with floaties on mic and claim that happened.
So Ross will probably like me because I'm saying this. You know, it's not a lifeguarded situation. So when you're doing anything, whether you're in your kayak and you fall out or if you wade in there, you know, it's not intended for that. It's intended for, you know, fishing. But one of the visions that fishing and being near ducks and being near the water, one of the visions that was part of the West Side Park Plan, and we can talk about that a bit as well, was that people could utilize it for, you know, small watercraft. So if you have like a little paddleboard or what have you, and that paddleboard or a, yeah. You know what I'm talking about. Something like that, you could use it for that. I'm certainly okay with that. I think that was part of the vision of those folks that participated in the West Side Park Plan. You know, if the commission's absolutely not okay with that, then I think that's something we need to talk about. But we felt that that would be an addition and with the deeper water can be something that's, that can be done there. That can't currently because it was so shallow, you completely hit the pole, so, or hit the bottom with your oars.
Like to add something real briefly to that thought. It's not going to be a swimming hole if we see problems, if people are abusing that. It's perfectly within your authority to simply pass an ordinance. So if we see people swimming beyond the scope of kayaking or whatever, then we could issue a citation to. But it would seem to me, post some rules and we'll probably be fine.
You know, similar to where we have our boat launch, I would hope that Larry, I forget his last name, will help us with the life jackets. So if people are using watercraft there, they're doing life jackets. And, you know, that was, to me, really secondary to having an area where everyone can access water, whether they are able to get on the dock or get on the bridge or get on the rocks, they can still access the water.
And so I just want to talk about the tree, the cottonwood. It's my, so the understanding is that it's not safe? Is that what you're saying?
I don't believe it's safe. Now, I, you know, when I look at it visually, I'm not an arborist, but I'll talk to you about whatever arborist has said, but I am not a trained arborist. When I look at it, I can clearly see a very large branch dangling from that tree. I can see some spots on that tree that don't look like they're holding up very well. I see a lot of dead branches. I know that that tree has lived its life expectancy. Now, that's not to say it's going to blow down tomorrow. We had a couple of big storms and it has made it, but it has lived its lifespan. So typically, you know, when we're doing projects, for example, we're going to, we have a street project coming up where we're going to remove some trees, especially when they've lived their life. If there's a disease like ash borer and it's an ash tree, that's when we make those decisions for those to come down. I had our arborist and our Parks Maintenance Superintendent go and take a look at that tree in anticipation of our discussion tonight. They agree, yep, it's an old cottonwood tree that's lived its life. How old exactly it is, we don't know, but we think it's between sixty and eighty years, which it could stand another twenty years. It could stand another twenty minutes. I think that there is a, right now, definite danger from being, standing under that tree with that limb hanging. And then with some of the spots on the tree that I think are rotting, again, I'm not an expert, but that I think are rotted, I think we should, that tree should be removed. I also think that, you know, going forward, if we are going to have improvements and encourage more people coming to that park, we should think about having older trees of any type near that vicinity. We'll probably have other discussions as well because if you go to some of our other well-established parks, you know, we have some mature trees that, you know, could pose threat. But I think too, of course, the first primary issue is safety. The second to me would be if you're going to invest those kind of dollars, we should really be careful about whether or not, you know, what we're doing. So I understand that this is not, wasn't an easy decision for me and it won't be a popular decision for the community. And I still think it's the correct decision because I feel strongly that if you're investing these kind of dollars, by the time we have the private investment and public investment, we're at one point seven approximately. You know, I would hate to make that kind of investment and then that tree does fall. I'm not trying to use that as a, like, tree's going to fall threat because I don't know that. But that just makes pretty good sense to me that, you know, now's the time to do it. I don't know how we would do that when, if we have to do it in five years or ten years or two years when there's, the improvements are there. It's going to be more difficult and more expensive. But so I don't know if that entirely answers your question, but I don't feel it's safe right now currently, no.
I appreciate the answers to the questions that I think a lot of people have been asking. You know, my only criticism of this was, is that this seems like it's the wrong time to be, to be doing this conversation. And then I think that's, you know, I think that's on all of us. I think us as a commission, I think, I think it should have been something that was brought up when we were, when we were doing the planning so that we could be transparent. And so that the discussion could be had because right now the bid's been let, right? I mean, it's, it's an ongoing project. It's a, to stop this would cause a whole bunch. It'd be a change order. It would be, it could completely pump the brakes and stop the, stop the project. I just feel that, you know, in the future, I know it's difficult, right? It's like, well, what thing is going to create ire amongst, amongst the community? But, you know, I, I was not aware that we were, that we were doing this. And from my understanding, I don't, I don't think, from everyone that I spoke to, I don't think anyone else on the commission knew that this was what we were going to do. Because I had, I had somebody ask me and, you know, my response to that was, I didn't know we were doing that. And I think it's important that I'm, that I'm honest about that and not try to say that something that I, that, that I did know, did know, because I didn't. And it's, it's an awkward position to be in when you're being asked this question, something that we have voted on. And boy, I didn't know that, I didn't know that we were doing that. I think that it's the best answer. It's the honest answer. That's the answer that you need to give. But I would rather not be giving that answer in the future. I don't, I agree, it probably is the, I love, I love the tree. I love the, I love big cottonwood trees. I love, I love the old trees. I love them along the river. But I also see the other side of it. And, you know, it's, it's tough to change course. It would be tough to change course now. So I would just like to state that, you know, in the future, if we can, and I don't have the answer, like, how do you tell everything that's going to come up? I don't know that, but I do think it's important to acknowledge it when, when it does happen. And that's not the intent. The intent is not to, I don't think anyone, any of us up here is, there's, there's an attempt to deceive, an attempt to not be transparent. So I think if it, if it does come up to the point where, where it could look like that, that we acknowledge it and say, and say that we will try to do, we'll try to do better. And that, that absolutely was not the intent.
So I can, I can appreciate what you're saying, Ben. I thought about this a lot and I had to take a step back because I, you know, our, our job as city commissioners, I to feel, is not to dictate the minutia of every project. You know, this went through, I remember sitting in this room multiple times doing the West Side Park planning sessions. And then we've had multiple meetings about this. And, you know, it never occurred to me that, to talk about this tree. But I also, based on the past five year, or three years of experience on this commission and my life in Yankton, can trust the high-quality projects that have been completed through our administration. And so it didn't dawn on me that this was going to be an issue because I always trust what they're saying and what they're doing. And so I still don't think it's an issue. I think, you know, the public, we acknowledge to the public that this, you know, they love this tree and here's why it has to come down. And that's valuable, but we also can't hamstring projects by getting so boiled down to the details that we can't function as a board of advisors to the city staff. So it's a tough balance and actually right, Ben, we need to acknowledge to the people that were concerned, here's why. But I think going forward, it's, it's still wise to be the role that we're designed to be and not try to drive the, every detail of the project because that's going to be a no-some game for us. I mean, there's no way to win that. At least, I don't think so. We have, we have hired high-quality admin staff to do that job for us. My two cents.
So I completely agree with you, Mason. When it was asked if this should come up to be part of the discussion, I definitely agreed it should be a discussion. It should be something that we talk about because if there's enough people in the community that are concerned about it, they obviously don't trust the system like we do. We're comfortable with approving the project because we know the thought process that goes behind it. Each of us probably couldn't have said which tree was being removed off the top of our head or what was happening, but you trust the system. And obviously, some individuals were concerned with that. And so I think this provides peace of mind that it is. It's safety. It's long-term planning. It's trying to make sure that we're making the right decision with taxpayers' money versus having to revisit this ten years down the road or five years down the road or two months or twenty minutes. But I just think, yeah, you guys do a great job in your planning and we do trust you. And we just have to make sure that, you know, we're prepared to answer questions along the way and that we don't create more uncertainty as well.
I agree with all those comments and I think it's important that we, as I sat here at the last meeting, I was going to bring this up and I'll bring it up now. I think it's extremely important as the YouTubers that are out there listening online, as well as anybody that has questions, that they feel that we are, they can, can speak to us, they can contact us. And it's, I would like just to say it's extremely important that if you have something to bring up, that you bring it up. And I'm glad we're having this discussion. It may not change anything, but it's, it's important that we have this discussion. And I agree with Mason and Ben. The only thing that I would add to it is, it is, it is a trap to get stuck in the minutia because I do believe that we have wonderful department heads and they do, they do a wonderful job. And to get stuck in that minutia then kind of slows the system down when we really should be continuing to move forward. when we really should be continuing to move forward. The only thing I would caution is, though, is that that tree is a, is the largest tree in the park, and is a pretty major part of that park, and I appreciate City Manager Leon that you brought up, that, you know, we maybe should have brought it up earlier, and we learned something. And I think that it's important, and again, that we don't get stuck in minutia, but something that big, maybe we should have spoken about before, and I can see all sides of that.
This is Commissioner Mybaum. So back in 2019, when the, when the West Side Park meetings were happening with the public, I, you know, kind of, kind of echo a little bit with what a handful of commissioners have said here, in that I wasn't part of those meetings, but I do know that the coverage of those meetings made it very clear that everybody in the public who participated came away with a consensus of they really liked the park the way that it is, the way that it was, and, and really didn't request many major changes. So I think it's fair to guess that of all the people who participated in those sessions, if they were to close their eyes and think about the park, and then draw a version of West Side Park for everybody to see, it would include that big tree on the island, right, as part of West Side Park. And so the way that I look at this, it is, it is a, it is a fundamental part of the park. We, as a city commission, we essentially, I suppose, through oversight of our own, granted, I dug through the, the engineering dialogue and the drawings, and it never, never stood out to me that this tree was going to be removed. I certainly understand the safety component that's being offered here tonight, but, but I do feel that, you know, we as, I appreciate our city manager offering up, you know, to raise her hand over this issue here, too. It does come back on us as city commissioners, that, that we fell short of our responsibility here. Because the way that I have chosen to look at this is that the consensus from, again, all the people in the public who participated in those meetings back in 2019, didn't want the park to change all that much, you know, we failed them with how this is going to play out. That big tree is going to be removed, probably, possibly, way earlier than, than it would pass away on us, or get struck by lightning, or get blown over. And, and we're going to be left with a park that is very, very different than, than what we're looking at, than what we were looking at two months ago. Already, it's very different. I know it's going to get built up, but it is going to fundamentally be a very different park than, than I think everybody in 2019 was expecting to see. And at that time, too, I think they were expecting to see something different in 10 years, you know, so we've, we've extremely accelerated this process. We may not be all on the same page as to why this acceleration has happened so quickly, and with the dollar amounts that are being spent on this, but, but again, the way that I see this is that, yes, we as a city commission, we've, we failed a lot of people in how this has played out.
Commissioner Mybaum, I'll kindly disagree slightly, because I attended all of those park meetings when it came to what, wanted to go there. I think I would agree, a lot of people didn't want to see a lot of change, in that they wanted to keep the island, they wanted to keep the bridge, they wanted to keep a park there where kids could play, but if you go back and look at the schematics, they had a lot of ideas from adding a, they wanted a four-season shelter with a full kitchen, to a lot of different things, and some of them are coming in there to a meditative garden and some of those things. So there were some big ideas that were presented, that made final schematics that people voted on. So I agree, while a lot of them said keep the park the same, I think it was more on the amenities and the type of experience that was offered there, versus exactly how many trees were there. The other thing I would bring up, that I appreciate, and it kind of went back to what Amy said, is originally, and I wasn't here, predates me, two trees on that island, and I appreciate the city, while keeping that in mind with this project, will be planting a second tree, an oak tree, which is actually more sturdy, not as soft wood as a cottonwood, that will be there, so we'll eventually get back up to those two trees, so will it look exactly like the park? Some of you remember as children, and I could go back and look at as, in pictures, what I do appreciate is, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, I'm not an arborist either, so I don't know how fast trees grow, but it's going to have that same look and feel as we move into the future. So that's my two cents. Like, you know, you always hate taking down a tree, but when it seems to be tied to safety and longevity of the tree, it's unfortunate, but I do think, in the end, if we're looking futuristic, that island will be back to looking more of like what people remember potentially down the road than what's even there now. Other commission discussion, I do know some folks maybe are here from the public, if there's anything that they want to say, I would ask them to step to the mic. I would ask you to state your name and your address, please, for the commission.
Do I need to turn on the microphone or anything?
I think so.
Okay. Can you hear me through the mask? My name is Bill Cope, I live at 802 West Third Street. I'm a third-generation Yanktonian. I remember the park when I was 10 years old, 60 years ago, with the big trees. If you look at the tree now, that's on the island that will stay, it's a pipsqueak. You know, your grandchildren may enjoy the tree somewhere similar to what we've got now with the cottonwood. I understand that there is an issue, that's going to not last forever, but you're taking away what, as people are saying, is, I think, the highlight of the park. Everybody I've talked to, including the wives of some of the commissioners here, think that the tree should not be removed. So you've got a lot of public opinion that thinks that we should do it. I guess it's your decision, but I'm disappointed. Also, I walked to the park this afternoon to make sure the tree was still there, so it wasn't a dead issue at this meeting, and there was a guy coming out of the fenced enclosure who'd been talking to the guy operating the equipment, pulling the rocks up out of the bank, and he said there was a way that was possible to make a compromise. You'd probably need to remove the dead branches, but otherwise, he said, it would be possible to keep the tree. So I want you to consider that a possibility, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to address the commission on this? All right, well, there is no action being taken tonight, so unless there's any other business in front of the city commission, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved to second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and anybody abstaining. All right, we are adjourned into executive session. Have a good night for those that attended from the public.